Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 7, 2023. I've got to go to this one. No, no, that froze. Never mind, sorry. This meeting hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If I could ask everyone to rise with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. I'm going to do a roll call. So Sean's zooming in tonight. He's not feeling well, so he's been kind enough to zoom in. So Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And the chair says aye, the agenda's approved. All right, couple of announcements. So our next meeting, which normally, the Select Board's next meeting, which would normally be on March 21st, due to scheduling conflicts, we are moving it to Monday, March 27th at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be on Zoom only. It will not be in person, Zoom only. This will also be the public hearing for setting the FY '24 water and sewer rates. Okay? Tomorrow, here in the Select Board meeting and on Zoom, is the, with the Finance Committee and all department heads, will hold the Second Public Budget Forum. This is for the Second Draft Budget Forum. Again, it'll be on Zoom. All information can be found on the town's website and/or social media pages. And as a reminder, on Friday and Saturday, we have the two-day symposium for AIR plus Devens 2033. All those that, if you can manage to attend, it would be great. You don't have to attend all day, there will be separate events and everything. But this is where we're going to start having a conversation about, you know, Alan will tell you he has a vision. Well, what's your vision? We don't know what your vision is if you don't come and tell us. So please, if you can attend this either both days or at least one of the days, that would be great, so that we can get this all up and running and getting information out to you so that we can go forward. Okay? All right. Any other announcements?
I don't have any.
Anyone here for public input? Yes?
I have a short statement I'd like to make.
Could you please come to the table and give us your name and address?
Okay. I read this at home and takes about three or four minutes. My name is Janine Nikopour. My address? I live in Hay Meadow Lane.
Okay.
And I have a short statement about the announcement that was made on February 24th at the Senior Center regarding the new Senior Center.
Oh, we're actually going to be talking about that later on. We are going to have an update about that.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
Well, no, because it all just came out like a half an hour before. I believe it was going to be mentioned under the Town Manager's report.
Okay, so should I make my statement now, or do you want me to wait? I yield to your decision.
If, what do you guys, do you want a letter maker statement?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
I think it's worthwhile.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So four years ago, I was asked to join the COA, the Council on Aging, and the Director and the COA Board wanted to start working on a new Senior Center. I'm sorry, I'm hoarse, I'm not sick, I'm still recovering from two months ago. We started to work creatively and collaboratively, brainstorming ideas on what we need to serve the town's growing elderly population. Together, we made rough sketches and wish lists. All of the original Council on Aging people are no longer on the project. They've moved away and want his dead. I do not wish to speak for them, but in honor of them and the dream we had of a new Senior Center, I wanted to give my opinion. I'm here as a senior who has donated much of my time to make a new Senior Center happen. I personally have driven around looking at land, port over aerial views online, contacted real estate agents, researched town documents and policies, and met with Mass Development and attended many other meetings. I've also talked with seniors at the center, at the grocery store, or while out walking. I personally visited seven Senior Centers and had extended interviews with two directors who generously gave their time and expertise. One director I visited was in the middle of her own process of building a center for her town, and she explained her approach. She thought it was important to keep the public informed and involved in the whole process. After the announcement on February 24th at the Senior Center regarding the latest proposal for building on Peroni Park, I do not think the public has been kept informed. I asked neighbors in the area and they knew nothing about it. A lot of decisions have been made in closed-door sessions. Most importantly, it appears our original dream to build a new Senior Center has been hijacked. AIR Town officials keep trying to combine our project with other projects. I think this is disrespectful to seniors who have been waiting for a new center, which could have been done by now if it hadn't been for the town pushing to build first on a contaminated site, and now pushing another potentially controversial project would take about a third of the field space away from Peroni Park. This would again be a combined project instead of just a Senior Center. If one looks at our online resources such as the Town Assessor's Maps, you can see the Town of AIR owns many more acres besides Peroni Park. Mass Development has identified land on Devens, which the town has not pursued. There may still be land available from the original feasibility report. My main two points are, one, that I would like to get back to the business of building a Senior Center and not solving other random problems that officials want to piggyback onto our project. Two, I ask that we give, that we give the people of the Town of AIR a chance to be involved in the whole process and have a say in choosing whether to change Peroni Park forever or build our Senior Center on other available land. As part of this, let's explore any and all good pieces of land, including other AIR Town land or land in Devens. I expect that the Building Committee, now the Site Selection Committee, and I will soon be part in ways, and I will look for other ways to continue to serve AIR seniors. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you very much. I also want to say thank you very much for your diligence in this process.
I appreciate that.
And I don't say that lightly, because I know that anybody who volunteers for these committees and whatnot, it's a lot of hard work. Okay, so it's very much appreciated. So prior to coming in here, we were told that we were going to find out this information. So you're a little bit ahead of us for tonight.
It was a public meeting, February 24th.
No, 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 I'm saying as far as tonight. You're a little bit ahead of us for tonight. But your meetings are open, so you know, people should be paying attention and everything, and we are going to get more information. And yes, the public does have a say.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else under public input? Okay. Dan?
Good evening. I brought a friend with me tonight. Like, introduce you to Matt Hernon, he's our new town engineer. So he hasn't formally met the board yet, so.
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
So.
That's Sean.
Sean, yeah, he's hiding. I can't see his face. But yeah, so Matt started January 3rd. He comes to us from Wellesley. He worked there for four years. Prior to that, he was in the private sector for four years. So he's kind of similar to when I started in AIR, about a similar part of his career. And he's done a great job so far. He's been doing great with design work, including the Third Street project we're going to be talking about tonight, and also with helping out with planning board reviews and everything. I think he's getting well-settled into the role now as town engineer. So just wanted to introduce you to Matt, and you'll probably be seeing some more of him as time goes on.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Excited to be here. Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's nice to have another engineer.
Yeah, it is. My point of view, too.
Just so you know, I do not speak engineer, so you know, you'll have to translate. Okay?
I'll do.
I'm married to an engineer, trust me. I've worked with many an engineer and you just know.
Yeah, and so for business, so for tonight, we have one item, the execution of the contract for Third Street Water and Drain Improvement, Improvements. And this project went out to bid, it was designed in-house by our engineering staff, including Matt. And on February 16th, bids opened, and the low bidder was CHB Excavating out of Westford at $422,700. And CHB, they actually worked in town last year, they did the water main replacement on Birch and McDowell Streets, and they did a good job. So the scope of the work out there, there's an existing 14-inch transmission main and also a 6-inch cast iron main, the 6-inch mains from 1898. Most of the, most of the houses are actually connected to that main. So this, we'll be putting in a new 12-inch ductile iron pipe to replace both. Well, now that we have the transmission main on East Main Street, it's kind of a redundant transmission main there. So the requested motion is for the board to vote to execute the contract with CHB for the Third Street Water and Drain Improvements for the $422,700. So if you have any questions?
Any questions? Sean, do you have any questions?
I don't have any, no.
Okay.
I don't have any questions either.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we vote to execute the contract with CHB Excavating for the Third Street Water and Drain Improvements Project in the amount of $422,700 for a signature by the board.
I'll second that.
Okay. All is in favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Matt.
Nice to meet you, too.
Yes, welcome. We'll keep you very busy, so just so you know. All right. So are we doing this with the town clerk, or consideration of votes?
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. As the board is aware, the Capital Planning Committee has recommended two debt exclusions for consideration by town meeting and the ballot. One is for the replacement of the West Main Street Bridge, and the second one is for the fire ladder truck. As the board is aware, and for the public's benefit, a debt exclusion is a two-part process. First, it will go to town meeting on April 24th, in which there'll be an article for each, an article for the West Main Street Bridge replacement, and an article for the fire ladder. There will be presentations through the moderator from the departments on those requests, including all of the tax impact information. They, each article has to pass by a two-thirds majority vote, which is a higher threshold as it's a debt exclusion. If those pass town meeting, they then have to pass by simple majority by the voters at the annual town meeting on Tuesday, May 9. As the board is aware, per the statute, Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), the Select Board has to approve the form of the questions, which you have in your packet, and this form is set by statute. You have to approve the form of questions and transmit that in writing to the town clerk within 35 days prior, in this case, prior to the election. So in factoring in consultation with the town clerk, in consultation as far as the timeline for printing of the ballots, preparation for town meeting and so forth, where I'm respectfully recommending that the board vote to authorize these two questions for inclusion on the annual town meeting election on May 9, and to authorize the town administrator to transmit that in writing to the town clerk.
Any questions? Sean?
I don't have any questions. Seems pretty straightforward.
I don't have any questions. I was on Capitol.
Okay, that's true. Okay, so, and, so this will go to be asked at town meeting, but town meeting could stop it from going to the ballot, is that correct?
Correct. So, well, in the event that town meeting were not to pass one of them or both of them, though the questions, and this has happened before, though the questions will appear on the ballot, even if they passed on the ballot, if it didn't pass town meeting, it will be null and void. So to be clear, in order for the debt exclusion to be authorized, both town meeting and the ballot have to pass it.
Yes. Yes.
Now, are you voting to?
So say, please say your name and speak up.
I'm sorry. Dennis Carron Pleasant.
Probably be best if you came here, so that, there's people online that won't hear you, so that's why we're trying to make sure.
Dennis Carron Pleasant Street in AIR.
Okay.
Now, are you voting on, you are recommending the debt exclusion, or?
We're voting on the form of the question.
That would appear on the ballot, but the board at this point, or for this particular purpose, is not taking a stance on whether they would recommend it or suggest it's a good idea or not. Is that correct?
Well, when it comes to approving the warrant, you have to remember that we're not just necessarily saying that we're approving that specific article or recommending that specific article. What we're primarily doing at all times is recommending that it go to town meeting for the people to decide. But for tonight, we have to approve the, the way the question is worded for how it would appear on the ballot question. And then what happens at town meeting will then dictate what happens after that.
Sure, and so.
Yeah, well, I was giving her, just a minute.
So just for the, having read the town warrant and I've seen the town warrants, I think sometimes when the people see that the board of selectmen sponsor it or recommend it, and sometimes the words have changed depending, I think, it's, it's, that's unclear. That is, I think most of the people who are attending town meeting assume that because it's on the warrant and the word sponsor appears, that you are in a kind of broader policy sense approving it or recommending it or urging the voters to vote yes. And, you know, I think that's a confusion that I've had on occasion.
Well, to be fair, we've, we've talked before about what the definition of sponsor means, and we're on public record of saying, if you're at town meeting and you don't agree, then you're going to say no. If you're at town meeting and you agree, you're going to say yes, because it's everybody's constitutional right to vote yea or nay, regardless of how I feel or how he feels. And we've, so we've discussed this before, so I'm, I'm kind of confused as to why you're confused.
I wasn't privy to those discussions.
Well, they were on open.
No, okay, I didn't attend them. So by sponsoring it, just to, so you are not, well, what I would say is that, as our elected representatives, the people, I think in some sense, kind of look to you, depending on exactly what's occurring, but they will tend to look to their elected representatives to provide guidance as to what is an appropriate avenue to pursue in terms of public policy initiatives. That's kind of why they put you there.
If the town warrant is owned by this board, so when we're sponsoring it, could be a finance article, but we're sponsoring it because we have to say yes, that should go on. So that's the sponsoring. And as far as recommending, though it's rare, there can be times when it's like two to one. Okay?
Right.
So, and then we give and answer all questions at town meeting. So between open meeting and town meeting, all the information is, is there for the person to give, you know, give their appropriate vote.
No, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not insinuating that there is some kind of behind-the-scenes maneuvering occurring. I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting that for the purposes of the people who attend and who don't always attend or aren't heavily involved in kind of following the process, when they see the word, and I've heard this kind of anecdotally from many people, when they see the word sponsor, they just assume that means that you're hoping or that as an elected representative who may well be in a position to be better informed about these things, that their elected representative is saying, vote for this. Now that, I'm not suggesting that that's technically correct or accurate.
Well, you've attended town meetings, so you know that at any time, we could stand up and say, well, this is how we feel. And I could stand up and say, well, I think you should vote yes, and this has happened at town meetings before. And Scott could say, well, I'm really not for it, and this is by. So, so I, I kind of disagree, and I'm not even sure what your question is.
Well, I guess the question is, well, my initial question was, so you are simply now voting on the form of the question that will appear in ballot?
Correct.
And authorizing it to appear on the ballot?
Correct. And again, a lot of the articles at town meeting, for the annual town meeting, are historically always there. They legally have to be there and reapproved by town meeting.
Right, and I, what I would say is, I mean, I have seen other towns where the board of selectmen on the warrant itself will say, not recommend it.
Right, and if we felt that way, but we kind of had a stance historically that it's, we shouldn't be necessarily driving it. We're recommending it to be put on the warrant because you may feel differently, and we need it to get to you, the town. So that, otherwise, if, you know, we're going to vote for everything, then we wouldn't have town meeting.
Well, I, I'll politely disagree with that.
Yeah, sorry. Susan, do you have an agenda?
Well, I was just clarifying that we need the, the question to be voted on at this time because we're cutting it way too close to meet the deadline. And in the event that on April, is it 4th, that you approve the warrant, that's when they go through with the articles, if at that time it's decided the debt question is not going to be on the article, I have time to pull the ballot question. But if not, if it's not voted, it would be, the apple cart would all be backwards. So this is just so that if it goes through for the warrant, it'll get on the ballot in time. And then, of course, if it's voted, if it's voted down at town meeting, it's still on the ballot, there's nothing we can do about that, and people can still decide to vote yes and no, but it would be a moot point. And again, with debt exclusions, it needs to go to town meeting and to the ballot. So what the board is doing is giving that to the town, as they should, to vote on how, whether or not a debt exclusion will go through. They're providing the information and the impact, but not necessarily the recommendation. And that's specifically for like debt exclusion, Prop 2 and a halfs, they really shouldn't be given a recommendation, but they're giving you the information to vote accordingly. So that's the difference on that. There are some articles, bylaws, amendments, that they can recommend. So there are certain layers to it as well, as to why they do and don't print, recommend on the warrant. So that's a little bit more on that.
Sure, yeah, that's helpful, thank you, Susan.
Okay. Oh, did we finish the vote?
No, we haven't taken a vote, Robert.
Okay. Sorry. Yes, Robert.
Madam Chair, members of the board, also to clarify, the language, and I'll just read one of them, is specifically set by state law, by statute. So the first one is, shall the Town of AIR be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to fund the replacement of the West Main Street Bridge and any costs incidental and related thereto, yes or no? And the other one is, shall the Town of AIR be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase and equip the fire ladder truck and any costs incidental and related thereto, yes or no? That is specific to state law. The board can't change that language, the town clerk can't, the town meeting can't. In fact, people often ask, if you notice, both questions don't even include the actual dollar amount, because they can't by state law. The other thing is, on the ballot, they will be printed exactly as this. There cannot be any other explanatory note, there can't be any, you know, Select Board supports, FinCom doesn't, it's just, it's just the question. So just, just to be clear, it's just the questions.
James? Yes?
There's a question.
Who?
Colleen's hand was up, now it's down.
Oh. Dennis? Yeah, okay, you did have a question.
Yeah, I put it down after I heard what Robert said, but I just want to let you all know what I was going to ask. And he answered the question before I asked it, which was, can the amounts involved be on the debt exclusion ballot question? The answer is no, so thank you for that, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I, that is a different question, or different answer, though, Robert, for the warrant, is that correct?
Through the chair, correct. The warrant will have the dollar amounts for both. In the case of the bridge, at this point, it's 3.5 million, and the fire ladder truck?
Almost 1.7.
About 1.7. I don't have an, the warrant article will specifically have the amount as well as an explanatory note, and there will be presentations on both at town meeting.
Great, thank you, I remember that from this afternoon, but I just, I, I didn't want to, didn't want you to think I didn't have a question, but thank you for your answers.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, who's that?
Aladdin Grant. Is there going to be a debt exclusion presentation up in?
Sarah, Sarah, you're breaking up, we can't hear you.
Oh, I might just have to cut out this time, thanks anyway.
Oh.
I think your question was, what I go is whether there's going to be a presentation on the debt exclusions, and there will be.
Yes, that town meeting, there would be, yes.
Also, for the budget forum for tomorrow, we have a few slides on Capitol. One will touch upon the West Main Street Bridge, the other one will touch upon the fire ladder truck.
Yes. So hopefully that was your question and we answered it, Sarah. So anything else? Okay?
Nothing else for me.
Okay.
I'll do it in two motions, just so we can split it up. I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the wording of the debt exclusion question for the Main Street Bridge as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
The chair says aye.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the wording for the debt exclusion as presented for the fire ladder truck.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Chair said aye. I got stuck on the yeses for a second there, so. Okay, so those will, and you're going, and, oh, and do we need to add to the, and we further authorized? Can we have, you know what, I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to notify the town clerk of the vote on the West Main Street Bridge debt exclusion question and the fire ladder truck debt exclusion question in writing.
I'll second that.
Okay. All is in favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right, yeah, we kind of missed that.
You made that motion?
Yes.
And who seconded it?
I think I was first.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
Sorry, Sean.
That's quite all right.
Okay, Robert?
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. You have in your packet the town warrants that have been reviewed and approved since the board last met on February 21st. In terms of the administrative update, as already mentioned, the, the second public forum is tomorrow at 6 o'clock, and hope that many attend. We'll have a brief presentation using Draft 3 of the budget that was released on March 3rd. As Mr. Hood mentioned, we will touch upon the Capitol, including the debt exclusions, as well of some, as well as some of the financial impacts up from town meeting. All of the department heads will be present, and then the most important thing is any questions from the Select Board and FinCom, and of course, the public. It will be an in-person meeting, but there will also be the remote participation for the public like tonight to participate. The chair has already mentioned the rate review meeting coming up on March 27th, and a lot of good work was done by the Rate Review Committee, not only on the rate recommendations, but. but updating the, the rate model. Before I get into the, the action items or any questions as the board may have, I do have two items under the administrative update. The first one has to do with the idea, request, and sort of proposal for municipal aggregation for residents for energy relief. As the board is aware, back in November, as National Grid and other mainstream providers had a significant rate increase that has impacted almost everybody, not just residents, commercial, and even the towns' energy accounts, as we've discussed. We are actively looking to come before the Select Board with a recommendation and a proposal for a municipal aggregation for residents, and it would be what they call an opt-in. It would be optional, it doesn't mean that residents have to take advantage of it, but they could. And basically, speaking conceptually, take all of the residential accounts, and through those numbers, have a more favorable rate, say, than National Grid. There is a process to this. The next step will be an update to the Select Board with the details of it. It may also involve town meeting approval. If that is the case, being realistic, our goal would be for the fall town meeting, and our goal would be for the fall, hopefully to have this in place before the next heating season. To be clear, the town, meaning all of the towns' accounts, because there might have been some confusion, the towns' accounts that we've talked about are in an aggregation that's separate. So we, we have through Constellation, an aggregate account for all of the municipal accounts. What we're talking about is a municipal aggregation for residents. And in many towns, you know, Shirley has one, Harvard has one, if you go on the Mass DPU site, you'll see a lot of the towns that have them. So, we have heard from a lot of residents, I know Select Board members have raised this concern as well. So we hope very shortly to be back here at the table with a proposal and a plan to move forward on that front. The second item that I had planned tonight was just to inform the board that on March 27th, the Senior Center Site Selection Working Group was going to come before you on the 27th with a formal recommendation on a potential site for the Senior Center project. There's a lot of detail with that, and there is, the plan was to come on the 27th in detail. I don't want to get into a debate, and I won't, but I just want to clarify a couple of things that were made under public input respectfully. So just to be clear, the first site that was recommended on West Main Street, the former Dry Cleaners, was not just pulled out of the sky. As this board will recall, as you sponsored, there was $30,000 appropriated back in 2019 by town meeting to do a study, which was done with a professional consultant. The fundamental challenge we have in Air, as the board knows, is for a project of this size, we do not have municipal land or municipal buildings that other folks may have that are readily available to house this. That's, that's number one. Number two, we need at least, at minimum, about a 1.5 acre site for this project. After all of that work, a recommendation came to town meeting, and there was a debate and concern, it was tabled. And that was in October of 2020. At that time, so it didn't languish, per this board, I put together a, a working group to look at, to revisit the study that was done, and to look, to find a potential site recommendation for this board. Not that this is going to be the site, but to find a site recommendation. And contrary to which was, in my opinion, erroneously presented, there isn't a lot of land. That's disingenuous. We spent two years looking in Air. Now, just to be clear, the working group has 11 members on it. The Senior Center Director, the Chair of the COA, Mr. Curran, Ms. Janine Nityapur from the COA, the DPW Director, Mr. Diskin, the Planning Board, myself, Ms. Antonellis, the Parks Director, the Economic Development Director, and Ms. Heresy from the Economic Development Office. There were 11 members. We've spent almost two years looking for land. We revisited all of the sites. You may recall, we came before you, we issued a townwide, and I'll argue a statewide, because Ms. Antonellis put it on the Commonwealth website for procurement, we issued an RFP for sites. And a proactive RFP, we received one response for a non-viable site in Devon's. After looking at all of it, and, and what has been left out is, Ms. Nityapur has been adamant, and I respect this, that this should be built on Devon's in mass development. And I'm going to publicly ask this board right now, are we going to, are you going to support a project that's built on mass development land with Air taxpayer money? I mean, not to put you on the spot, but how would that go over at town meeting?
Personally, I, I, my personal thought is, I would like to see it within the borders of Air, but I understand that we are tight on space.
Right. But, so what's happened is, we've looked at mass development. To conclude for tonight, because I do take issue with the fact that the individual on the Site Selection Committee knew that we were coming tonight to just inform you that we'd be coming back on the 27th for a detailed presentation, and I just find it very disingenuous, though it is her right, to hijack this on the other 11 members and issue her statement, which is not correct. It's just unfortunate, it's her right, I disagree with that, I wouldn't do that if it was reversed. That being said...
I would just like to say, you said some...
Point of order.
Inaccurate things, too.
Point of order.
I don't know, I mean, approach, okay.
Point of order.
You know what, we're going to, we're going to just stick to facts, please.
And I have.
Okay? So, I got, I got a couple of questions.
I haven't, respectfully, I haven't finished, Madam Chair.
Okay, yep.
You know, we are coming back on March 27th with over two years' worth of work. You will have a formal recommendation with backup documentation, an entire chronology. We are recommending a site for your consideration on a portion of Peroni Park, which I transmitted to you. We will have maps, we will discuss that. The Site Committee voted 11 to 1 to recommend it. Ms. Nityapur is not in support of it. The Council on Aging endorsed it by a vote of 3 to 1. Ms. Nityapur voted against it. And the Parks Commission has voted to recommend it for your consideration. We will bring that on Monday, the 27th. I'll reserve further comments there, as the facts will speak for themselves, and it's the purview of the Select Board to decide whether we proceed to explore this opportunity or not. And with that, I'll get to the items on the agenda.
Could I ask two quick questions? So, as far as the mass development, would that not mean a super town meeting in order to build on mass, if, if, on mass development land?
No.
I'm, I'm, okay. All right. And second is just that whatever gets decided, the town has a say. Correct?
Yeah, to be completely, just real quick, so that's a good question. The next step on March 27th is this Site Selection Working Group that has no standing authority, if you will, is going to make a recommendation to you that does, saying, after two years, and you'll have the whole deal, this is what we're recommending. At that point, if the board, the next step would be to consider the formation of a formal building committee, which is subject to the open meeting law and public record. It should have resident members on it that the board would appoint, and some, I would call, other individuals. The building committee, and many of you remember with the high school project, would have to meet in posted public meetings, and will then drive this project. The project will also have to go through the capital planning process, and there's a lot of work to do on the funding, and it is going to require a town meeting approval. So there is a lot to do in yet to come. Just the first step on the 27th is to give you the recommendation.
Quick question, when you said town meeting approval, would it be on this coming town meeting?
No.
It would be like, maybe the fall town meeting?
The earliest, and there's, there's several variables, and there could be several components that town meeting has to consider as far as the funding. The earliest would be the fall. There won't be anything, either the fall or a special town meeting. If you recall, at one of our presentations, we had talked about if the board would consider, we're not there, calling a special town meeting.
Okay.
Am I allowed to say anything?
Real quickly.
Okay. If you go on the town assessor site, under Query, on the map section, and you put in owner of town of Air, you can see the town of Air owns well over 100 acres off McPherson, another large plot behind it, and several small plots around the town. So that's my facts. And then, my second is, I met with Devon's Mass Development, and they said the next step would be to see town officials. And as far as I know, that did not happen, except for Alan Menoyn, who did clarify that we don't now need a town meeting. If they did meet with him, I see him shaking his head, I never heard it in the building committee meeting, or anywhere else.
Okay, so, just so you know, anything on mass development, that's their property. It, it could be, the map could still show that it's historical error, but we have no control over it. Okay?
No, it would, it would have to be a partnership between our town officials and mass development, and when I met with them, they were willing. And I feel like this site is the site that's not willing. And I was caught in the middle, like the clash of titans. So I bow, I bow down.
Okay. So, you know what, we're going to present this on the 27th, and go from there. Okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. Okay. That's my place.
Before I continue my report, I reserve the right to respond to mischaracterization that I am the problem, or that town officials are the problem with mass development. Madam Chair, to be clear, Ms. Nityapur wouldn't know this, because she was away in Florida when we had the meeting, she was absent at the meeting, that I talked in detail. I have met with Meg Delory in mass development about this. Okay? The, the amount of obstacles, not including the costs, are something that this board, in this town, would have to seriously consider if we can't find a spot in Air, if this site doesn't work. You know the track record with mass development. They're not willing. That's number one. Number two, it is professionally insulting to the other 10 people on the committee that if it was that easy to type in the town of Air on the assessor computer, and there's 100 acres, I would end with that. Really, it was that simple? Moving on to the FY '24 budget update.
No, we're, we're moving on. Okay.
On the FY '24 budget update, in the interest of time, we have a dynamic, hope to be dynamic, public presentation tomorrow on the budget. I will reserve till then, as it does, I don't want to keep repeating what we're going to do tomorrow. I would just like to stress, we'll be using Draft 3 of the budget. It is available on the town website budget page, if you go there. If you need a hard copy to let my office know upon request, we can provide a hard copy. That is where we are in the budget process, that is the document for which the second presentation is built upon. The second item that I, will post this to the town website, is the update on the warrant. The 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Update. As we are now in this time in the process, we are moving towards developing the warrant. The deadline for warrant articles is Friday, March 31st at noon. The deadline for citizens petitions, March 31st at noon to the town clerk. The Select Board is scheduled for the budget calendar to review and approve the warrant at your meeting on April 4th. And as we've done historically, the FinCom has also been invited to review the budget and any financial articles as well as part of that process. What you have as of March 7th, you can see, as of right now, there are a total of 25 articles, not, actually, less than usual for the annual. Mostly, as you can see, sort of the standard articles that we have, obviously, the budget, the two school assessments, the enterprise funds. There is one article for the town hall clerical union contract funding, and there'll be a brief presentation. You can see on page 2, Article 11 and 12 are the two debt exclusion articles that we just talked about. The capital, and then we're going to talk about it in a minute, some of the uses for free cash. On the raise and appropriate articles, as of right now, and as the board knows, and as a refresher for the public, these articles are the articles that have passed, have an impact in the development of the tax rate. Interestingly, there's only potentially two that we know of right now. One would be, and this is on page 3, the first year's interest, general fund borrowing for the capital, it's a standard article, the amount is being calculated. And then there's the issue of the funding for the aquatic weed control for the town ponds, but I'm going to be meeting with conservation, as there's $40,000 in that article already. So the question is, do they need more for next year? So if not, we may not need this for next year. So, again, light on that side. I would just point out on page 4, the community preservation articles. Article 22 is the standard community preservation budget article. Article 23 is the transfer of funds, usually 10,000, towards their administrative costs. There will be, we anticipate, two articles. Article 24 for the Peroni Park Playground Project in the amount of $750,000. This is in addition to the $220,000 that will be recommended by capital to complete the playground project. There will be a public hearing on March 22nd for that. And also, Article 25, the Ir Affordable Housing Trust, looking to put some more funding into that. Again, public hearing on March 22nd. There are no citizens petitions as of tonight, there's still some time, and there may be another article or so, we'll keep you posted. I'm not aware of anything, and when we meet on the 27th of March, we probably will have a, a draft of said warrant. So that's the, the update. This memo, by the way, will also be posted on the budget page for the public.
It's already up there, I think, as of tonight.
Okay.
That's a small annual town meeting warrant.
Don't jinx it.
It's too late, I've said it all out, it's jinxed, that's it.
So, the last thing, and we just have a couple slides, and this is for the board, it's two-sided, it's a hard, this is from the by-board meeting earlier, and these will also be put on the budget website. My fourth item is sort of, is the discussion on proposed recommendations for the use of free cash. And as the board is aware, the town of Air has been fortunate that we have had, over the last seven years, a significant amount of certified free cash, which ultimately, we need to decide, we, the Select Board, FinCom, and town meeting ultimately, to decide what to do with it. So, the first slide up, and it's up on the screen, our stabilization balance as of December is just over 2.6 million. Our capital stabilization is just over 3.4 million as of December 22nd. And just, again, for a refresher for the public, both the stabilization and capital stabilization can only be accessed by a 2/3s vote of a town meeting. So just to be clear, it's not this funding, the town manager, the Select Board, the FinCom, this is, it's the people's money, and it has to be accessed by town meeting. So these are the two stabilization funds you often hear, too, like rainy day fund. We've been trying to build up the capital stabilization for future capital projects. The last bullet is the certified free cash as of June 30th of 2022. And I'm pleased to report it was just over 1.9 million for this year. So keep that number in mind as we go to the, sort of the next two slides. The second slide, now I want to stress, this is recommended uses. So two things. One, ultimately, the Select Board will approve the warrant articles with the amounts in them, and the, and the FinCom generally weighs in as well. And this is, all, these are all subject to action by town meeting. So what I'm getting at is, there's some discussion and choice here... So what I'm getting at is, there's some discussion and choice here, is why I wanted to have the discussion. So this is based on, from the professional department heads, sort of a suggested, recommended use. You have that top number again in bold, over 1.9 million is the certified free cash. The UDAG replenishment, the Urban Development Action Grant, which is under the select board. The select board can, has, from time to time, authorized funding from this, generally for infrastructure economic development purposes. And per the town's financial policies, they're supposed to replenish it when available from free cash. So there is the Park Street Utility Study, which the Office of Economic Development and DPW will be coming back to the board in the future. This study was to look at the utilities and underground placement of utilities on Park Street. That study was 14,185. We're recommending you consider replenishing that fund from the free cash. The second item, the library HVAC, replenished the library's special fund, which were some trust funds they had. There was a situation with the heating system at the library. Good news was it happened in June, so the heat wasn't needed. The bad news is it happened after town meeting. It was considerable at the time, and there was concerns about the reserve fund at that point, which didn't manifest. So the decision, a decision was made that, and it needed to be fixed, and parts needed to be ordered, et cetera, before August. And so the library board of trustees had voted to authorize 35,000 from this special fund, and are requesting that we replenish those funds with free cash to make that whole. The next one, GASB 45, that's the post-employment benefits that this town has consistently committed to 300,000 each year. The balance is from the meals, the local meals tax. So the 145, 636 would be this year's free cash portion, but the balance is from the local meals tax, and that's per the OPEB board of trustees. The forward funding of the pension proposal, we started that about two years ago, that you can forward pay the pension assessment of the town to realize considerable savings. If you look in draft three of the budget, the town's pension assessment only went up 1.6%, as opposed to about six, would have been 6.5% if we hadn't forwarded, funded the pension. We're recommending that you consider that again. I just want to point out that you realize the savings every two years, assuming you do two consecutive years. So next year, if we did it this year, and then we did it again next year, there'd be more savings again. The compensated absences special revenue fund, this was created by town meeting in the 2020 annual town meeting. This is a fund of town meeting where the funds can be used to pay out retirements and separations from the town. As the board will recall, why that was significant is before we had the fund, those costs would come out of the respective departments. Sometimes it activated reserve fund transfers and other shortages. This is more of a best practice for planning for retirements. We're recommending a 10, there's about $60,000 in the current fund. The target is about 100,000. Looking at the year ahead, is, that we know of minimal retirements, we figure this is a low year, that 10,000 would be sufficient. The last two, capital stabilization and stabilization, and just to refresh for the public, it actually appears as one article, stabilization on town meeting, but there are two accounts. These are subject, you know, to discussion, and there's some choices here, which we'll get to in a minute. On this scenario, again, recommending capital stabilization, the higher amount at 750,000. On stabilization, recommending 359,073. I want to point out that 300,000 of that would be for the year four impacts of the four new firefighters. Last year, there was 400,000. This year would be 300,000, and next year would be 200,000. This is to proactively plan for when the grant expires to those costs. So 300,000 of that would be for that consideration. The last item is a bond anticipation note payment. This is a new proposal from the new finance manager, Ms. Tierney, who unfortunately was gonna be here tonight, but the situation arose, so I'm gonna do my best to explain the, and Mr. Det help. So, yeah. So what Ms. Tierney is proposing for consideration, and again, stressing propose and consideration, is there's an opportunity for the town to pay off, I'm gonna just grab my sheet, there it is. There isn't, and let me actually, and this will be on, Madam Chair, here's a copy. This is a hard copy of that slide. Barbara, there is a window between now and the fall when we go out for the borrowing. And the reason being is, assuming that the West Main Street Bridge debt exclusion passes, she's going to do a short band borrow in the spring, because we need the funding to start that project. It's contingent again upon town meeting and the ballot, to make that clear. And then the major borrow for all of the capital would be in the fall. So there's a window between the two. She's identified three, you'll see three general fund projects. The lighting, the 70,000, the paving, this is 20,000, and the HVAC project, which 52, 565. And then you'll see the principal amount for each, and then the interest payments. What she's proposing for consideration is if we take the 320,000 and pay this off, the first benefit is, obviously, pay this off and take it off the books. But there would also be a total savings to the town over the life of it, just to stress, of $89,000. Something she identified, looking at a good fiscal policy, something that we felt, and we discussed it at the by-board this afternoon, that we wanted to bring forward to the by-board into the select board for consideration.
That's well done.
Did I do all right?
Yeah, you did all right. So I mean, I guess, put it in layman's terms, because my head was spinning this afternoon, also when Barbara first presented it. Because there's the shift in the timing, it gives us this opportunity to basically do a prepayment on these three bonds that are outstanding. And by doing that prepayment of 322,000, we would actually save the 89,000 over the life of it all.
Did nobody just say?
Yeah.
He's bolstering it.
I was waiting for him to say something new.
No, he did a great job.
Okay.
The hard part, to wrap your head around, is the timing of it all, but I think Robert did an excellent job explaining that.
So on this, what we want to just stress, why it's, it has to do with the timing of the band and the borrow in the fall. So if we don't, just to be clear, if we don't, if the town decides not to do this, which it can, that window will close. We'll still have to pay off this piece, and that the opportunity for the savings, obviously, at 89,000, won't be there. It's an opportunity, given the current free cash situation, that we have some flexibility to consider that. Again, for the purposes of tonight, it's more of just a discussion and to get the information out there. We're not looking for a decision across the board. And then there's just one more slide, I think. Thank you, Carly. Back to my other presentation. And we are gonna touch upon this refined, more eloquent tomorrow as well. So the last slide, and we've used this last year as well. So again, you have the omnibus budget as a draft three at the top. We exceed the benchmark for stabilization for the policies. That being said, it's still not bad practice to continue to build up the reserves. The third bullet, as I pointed out, of the stabilization piece that we put in this year, we're recommending that 300,000 of it be designated for the impact of the four firefighters when the grant expires in another year. And then at the bottom, there were a couple of scenarios for the rest of the stabilization. Scenario one, which I think was on the other slide, puts the majority in capital and 359, 73 at stabilization. Or you could, with scenario two, just to illustrate it, put a little less in capital and a little more in stabilization. Or scenario three, any combination of the 1.1 million that's remaining. So the 1.1 million, if you put, on the first slide, if you adopted all of those recommendations, that would leave 1.1 million left to be decided to go between capital and stabilization. Now, if you don't, if, for example, I'm just throwing, hypothetically, if we didn't do the band scenario, okay, that was 320,000, we'd have another 320,000, say, to add to the 1.1 to decide. But so there are some choices. Can you just move Carly back just to the first slide? Oh, a second, I'm sorry. Yep. From our vantage point, the definitive ones to conclude, to strongly consider, I think the commitment to replenishing the UDAG has served the town well, so, and that's a short one. I think replenishing the library special fund trust from the HVAC thing, while we can, is prudent. The OPEB commitment has been consistent, the 145. The forward funding of the pension, we have seen significant savings. But again, that, if we didn't do that, then the 300,000 would be available for capital and stabilization. And folks have asked, well, what if we did a less amount than 300,000 for the forward of the pension? When we did the analysis, when you, the 300,000, to see the maximum benefit is key. We ran scenarios at 250, 200,000, and it starts to drop off. The compensated absences, I think that's a small amount to replenish that fund. And that sort of concludes, at least, the presentation on the free cash.
Sean, did you have a question?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Very well done.
Pauline?
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak a second time.
Okay, but you're limited. You're not getting a third, okay?
Well, we'll see how that goes. I have a question for Robert real quick. Will you be discussing free cash at the budget presentation tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna hold off then and not bother you all with it tonight, and I'll do it tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, and we'll be using that slide. Yep.
Great. Thanks so much.
The last item that I have, Madam Chair, number five, is a request for a one-day beer and wine license from St. Mary's Church for their St. Patrick's Dinner event on March 18th of 2023. And you have the letter from St. Mary's in the packet.
I unfortunately will not be in town. It'd be a big disappointment. We'll disappoint. So it is.
Do we need, do we set the beginning and the end hours correct on this?
Yep.
So 5:00 PM to what?
We typically do four to eight.
Four to eight.
But it starts at five. Right, but if people get there early to get seated and stuff. People show up really early for the event. But if it starts at five, are they, they serve early? They can start serving at four. The dinner starts at five. Okay. I mean, that's how we've typically done it.
And eight o'clock is late enough?
Plenty of time. Plenty of time.
I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Mary's Church and their parish hall on Saturday, March 18th, from the hours of 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All right. Anything else?
Unless there are any questions from the board, that concludes my report. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
All right. So, under new business, so, over the last couple of months, we've discussed that there's ARPA funds, and we've discussed that we gotta discuss it. So I want to formally have us put it on the agenda. I'd like to do it on the 27th. I know the 27th is getting pretty full, but I'd like to do it before the 27th, because depending on how it goes, it could impact things for town meeting or the debt exclusion. Because we need to discuss, how much is in the ARPA? Do we know? Do you remember?
1.3 is the balance.
Okay.
1.3.
Right, so we know that's for infrastructure. We have a bridge that everybody needs to really pay attention to. I know you can't see that it's a bridge when you drive over it, but it is a bridge, and we need to fix it. You know, so there, it could impact that, could impact the ladder truck. However, we want to discuss it. And then, you know, so I'd like us to really sit down and look at potential options as far as using those funds for.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Just to, on that, what we could prepare for the 27th is some of the things that have been discussed. Let me, the balance is about 1.3 million, we'll confirm.
Yeah.
And just per the ARPA program, the select board has till December 30th of 2024 to commit the funds, and then they have to be spent by December 30th of 2026. And one of the things that we have discussed, have just briefly sort of put on the radar screen, is in terms of this board's commitment on using the funds towards infrastructure, there was the Spectacle Pond Water Transmission, and then there was the Westford Road Sewer, and the DPW director, to his credit, through the competitive bidding process, had a considerable savings on that project from the original ARPA amount. We should maybe consider, and let's run some scenarios, a portion of that, for example, on the West Main Street Bridge, and see what that would look like and what the impact would be. Again, let's get some more information, and then I'll pull up from some of the other topics that were discussed. And the ARPA regulations have loosened up so much that you can almost use it for anything.
So, yeah, so anything and everything that we think that could fit in and might be, you know, a real benefit to the town. And I realize that, you know, we have until 2024, but we got a lot going on. I, you know, I don't think we should necessarily sit on it, you know, so, yes.
Can I, can I ask, what, I wasn't, haven't been following this conversation, what are permissible uses, or where might I find more information about what would be an appropriate use of, I guess, 1.3? And this is at the board's discretion?
Well, that, we kind of covered that more on the 27th, because then we'll have the exact amount, but the ARPA comes from the federal government.
Right.
Right. And we've touched upon it a little bit, but, I mean, I'd like to talk about it on the 27th when we have everything in front of us, rather than on the fly.
Oh, sure. I'm just asking for, where might I find information about, this is what ARPA funds can be legally spent on, or not, or, so that prior to the 27th, I am more fully informed about what I may or may not suggest?
Through the chair, I will send you a couple of links, but if you type in Massachusetts ARPA, in this case, Massachusetts ARPA spending, it will show you. When it first came out, there were a lot of restrictions, as I mentioned earlier, just through the chair. As the pandemic went on, they, you can almost use it for anything under the sun. Now, whether you agree or not with that, this board, not to speak for the board, to date, has only authorized two projects, which were infrastructure, because the feeling was infrastructure, water, and sewer theoretically benefits everybody. And one of those projects, the amount that was approved, came in much lower than expected through the competitive bidding process, so. But I'll send you a couple links.
All right, thanks. Thanks.
Okay. So, that's it.
27th it is?
Yes. And then I have a request. When you give us the, this is new, I didn't mention this beforehand. When you give us the draft warrant on the 27th, could you give us like the draft explanatory notes so that we can kind of peek at them on the 27th, so that when we go to approve the warrant on the 4th, those might be all taken care of, except for any minor tweaking?
You will have the whole draft. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so as a reminder, our next meeting is on March 27th. It's on a Monday, 6:00 PM, Zoom only, okay? We'd like everybody to attend tomorrow for the budget hearing. You can do it on Zoom or in person here in this office, in this room, at 6:00 PM tomorrow. And then if you're not busy and want some exciting time, show up at the Symposium on Friday and Saturday, okay? With that, we have an executive session.
We have missed.
Oh, a mini minutes, all right. I skipped, I almost skipped over the minutes.
I had no adjustments to the minutes.
Neither did I. I'll make a motion to approve the Air Select Board Meeting Minutes from February 21st, 2023.
Second.
All is a favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And the chair says aye?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, under exemption number two, non-union personnel, town clerk, personal service contract, and that the Select Board will adjourn directly out of executive session and not be returning to open session.
I'll second that.
All is a favor? Sean?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Good night, everybody. We are now in executive session.